All right, well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to our general session for October. I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on the broad, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, again, good evening and welcome. I want to begin comments by first giving a shout out to Director Danning and Harry. And the Public Works Crew, they just did a phenomenal job on our grand opening on Stewart Park Playground. Lincoln School, right? We had a whole lot of kids out. I was so excited, I jumped on the bus, the first bus that came, and I got them screaming and yelling, and then I said, "Follow me!" And the teachers was like, "No!" And I realized, oh, yeah, they get off in little pods, and then they orderly come off, and not chaotic like Mayor Sam. And so, but, Mark, just want to say, just want to say, phenomenal job. You're just, your whole crew, the grant writing, what an incredible park, and thank you.
You and your team and all the planning that went into that really did do some stuff. Thank you.
All right, and then the last thing for my comments, obviously we're restriping Central, so that was, that's been in the works actually for several years now as part of our streetscape design. And so, I think last month or the month before, we unanimously voted to move forward with the striping of Central between 10th and 3rd. And so, just be careful, and there's some adjustments coming up, a couple extra stop signs, so be careful out there and watch out for our families and kids. And also a reminder, besides the streetscape project, part of the outcome of that was from the Safety Committee and citizens, and so-
Some of those added stop signs in our Kokil Fire and Rescue.
All right, I'm going to move over to Counselor Flynn.
Yeah, I just want to echo Mayor's comments to you, Mark, and your team. I mean, my kids have been using that park, and it's great and fantastic, and it's awesome to see in the community, so appreciate it, all the hard work. Thank you.
Counselor Corvus.
I have nothing additional.
Counselor Waddington?
I'm just going to dito what you guys said. Great job. Thank you. Yeah.
So, the question is, did any of you climb up to the top of that slide?
No.
Yeah.
I did, too. It's not adult-friendly, just saying. All right, thank you, Counselors, and we're going to go ahead and go to our consent calendar. Agenda item number five. I make a motion to accept the consent calendar, September 2nd, 2025.
A second.
Motion by Counselor Waddington to approve consent calendar, seconded by Counselor Corvus. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous, there for Liz, Counselors. And we'll now move on to staff reports. Mr. Norberg, you're up first, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counselors. I don't have anything to add to my report this evening except for, I will get a finance report to you by the end of this week. It's pretty much done, but I didn't have time to proof it yet, and so I will get through that and get it all out to you.
Mr. Norberg, is that something that gets added, maybe, in the packet, or how does that?
Yes.
What's, okay.
We can have Liz add it in there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Norberg, and thanks for all your efforts and hard work. All right, interim Fire Chief, he's not here tonight, but Counselors, if you have any questions, we'll just throw them all at Mr. Norberg. How about that?
When is that open house?
Yeah, I don't see anything.
Do you remember the date on that? What's that?
The 9th.
9th?
All right, so just a reminder for our community, Kokil Fire Rescue has an open house on the 9th, and so it's usually a great event for the whole family and especially for the kids, and so October 9th. All right, and we'll move on to our Deputy Chief Fire Marshal, his report. If any questions, I bet Mr. Norberg knows something about it as well. All right, we're going to move on to our Planning Department. Haley Sheldon's here.
Hello. I do not have anything to add to my report, but let me know if you have any questions.
Thanks for all the grant updates. Appreciate it. It's very helpful to remind ourselves, especially you had reminded us kind of that timeline on one of those, so thank you for that. Very helpful.
Very proud of that.
Yeah, we are, too.
We're very excited to be getting close to hopefully the finish line, and we will hear back at the end of November.
Okay, great.
Awesome. All right, Director Danning, Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. One thing I wanted to add to my report, and it's not in here because it's still uncertain. We're waiting on contractors' comfort level with the weather forecast, but there's a chance that we may be doing a significant crack sailing project for the streets up in the Sanford Heights neighborhood. If that happens, it may occur Friday, and we're certainly going to be putting door hangers out. I think the latest we'd put them out would be tomorrow, so we're going to make a call tomorrow morning, but there will be parking restricted, no on-street parking for that entire neighborhood with the exception of Knott Street, the main street down there. We're going to leave that. And times throughout the day, there will be no traffic on certain loops, and we'll be publishing that information as well. So, people live out there, anyone listening, you know your neighbors live out there, you may just want to make them aware, be on the lookout, but like I said, we will put outdoor hangers, and there'll be sandwich boards up on the street as well, giving people this information. Other than that, I'm happy to answer your questions.
All right, I don't see any. Again, a shout out to Tina for all her works and efforts, and it's great to see the updates on the parks. It's so cool to see that. I love seeing those updates, so thank you for including that. It's a big deal.
Yeah, I did, I should highlight that, too. I've just put in Tina Hallmark's report, which is, she's a coordinator for the Adopted Park Program, and she's given us well-informed of all the activities there, and we do appreciate the whole, all the Public Works appreciates that. You know, they're taking care of some details that we just don't have time to get to, and they're really improving the park, so we appreciate it, and Tina's work as well.
I personally think it's great to have it in there, too, because it just reminds our community that there are outlets to volunteer. Yeah. Great job. Director Lucas, Public Library.
I have nothing to add, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Also another place people can volunteer, correct? Director Lucas?
Great job.
Oh, thank you, and thank you for all your programs, too. Appreciate it. Ifd Darrell, Kokil Police.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I do have one addition to my packet. I received notice today from Sergeant Doug Miller that he has accepted a position with the Klamath County Sheriff's Office, and he'll be leaving us at the end of the month. So, big shoes to fill on, in that position. We're sorry to see him go, but we wish him the best. I expect that we'll be posting that position and undertaking a position to fill that vacancy either this week or next.
Yeah, on that note, just want to thank Sergeant Miller for all his hard work and commitment to the city, and yeah, thank you, Sergeant Miller.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor.
And Shopper the Gose, I mean, you guys are just so thoroughly planned. I'm assuming people can still donate and maybe even volunteer for that advantage?
Yes. Our press release should be coming out this week. We finalized that, and planning is well underway, but anyone wishing to be part of that or contribute can contact us at the Police Department.
Awesome. Thank you, and to all your officers, doing a great job. And every once in a while, I ask them, "Do you still like your job?", and they grin and say, "Yes", and they, it's a genuine, authentic yes, and so, you know, I have, I just want to say, I appreciate it so much, and it shows in how they serve the public, so thank you to your officers.
Absolutely. We have a tremendous, tremendous group of officers here, I'm very proud of them.
All right, our City Recorder, Liz, and she has a report. Does that microphone? But I'm going to highlight something on our report. She, we are doing now an Employee of the Month, so I'm going to give a shout out to Emily Caffey. Doing a great job. Says here, "For her amazing leadership skills, her willingness to help others and problem-solve, she is always the first person to step up to a challenge and face it head-on. She is constantly looking for ways to improve things and make the city better, both staff and residents. Her coworkers look up to her, and she's a great example of the highest standards of the city of Kokil." Great job, Emily. Way to write it up there, Liz. Brush is on. If I read the whole thing, now you know I'm going to read it every month. Great job, and I like that we're doing that. Thank you, Liz. All right, anything for Liz? All right, great. Thank you, staff. Appreciate it, and we are now moving on to Agenda Item Number 7, Public Participation. And just a reminder, it's this point in the agenda where you can sign up if you wish to participate with public comment, and so we have that sign up here, and how this works is we allow three minutes, so I run a little timer, and we just kind of give you about a 30-second warning to wrap up comment. The idea here is it's your voice, and so we listen, and we listen without comment, and so we obviously take notes, and many of you know and who have commented, if it needed, follow up. We've always done that, or at least reached out, so we appreciate our public and comment. Do we have anybody signed up for this evening?
We do. Mr. Mayor, Paul Korosteki.
Oh, why don't you come on up to the microphone there? I won't tell you up, I won't tell you up there. You're kidding.
Okay. Hello, everybody. My name is Paul Korosteki. I'm a resident at Kokil in the unincorporated town of Riverton. I just, before I mention anything about what I'm here for, first of all, I just want to offer condolences to everyone here in Kokil, the families involved and everything. There was a resident that was found deceased today, and he was part of Riverton. His name is Lonny Creach, so from what I understand, I haven't talked with the family or anything, but just with social media and everything, I understand that there is a deceased victim, and they believe it's Lonny, and everyone's condoling his father that also lives in Riverton. So prayers go out to Kokil and the affected families. My reason for being here is just a follow-up from a few months ago about the ambulance volunteer service of paying extra because of the fact that in Riverton, we don't pay the extra fee for the water bill, but I would like to volunteer, and Lisa would like to volunteer. I've noticed that a couple months now, I believe it's Michelle, in one of the meetings, I think it was the August meeting mentioning that they finally had a category to put that donation in, not so much that it has a separate account number, but there's a designated line, and then I obviously have been following up with you all on Facebook with the live broadcast, so thank you for that when I can't make it here. And I noticed that I believe in last month, you guys voted in that part unanimously. So with that, I went forward and came to the, to City Hall twice already now, and the lovely girl behind the counter doesn't know anything. If I want to make a donation, you know, how do I write it out? Where does she put it? She has, she has no information at all, and then obviously with your busy schedule, Sam and Michelle, I understand she's on some type of leave, and Rick is no longer here, so I'm just wondering and coming here to know an update for those that want to volunteer their money to the city. I think it's important that we have to address it. I know that no one here liked doing it, but, okay, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul. You've got about 30 seconds here.
Okay, all right. Just, you know, I think everyone would like to know in case they want to volunteer and help out. I know this is temporary, and I'm all in, and I want to be part of the solution, not the problem. And I'm sure everyone else does, and so maybe you can answer that question for me and everyone else that's watching. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you, Lisa, and best assured, you do not have to leave tonight without writing a check to the city of Kokil if you- Because our City Manager, and if you ever have a question on that, our City Manager is the best person to reach out to during the week, but all the same, I appreciate you coming and highlighting the fact-
I understand your role.
Yep, and I appreciate you coming and highlighting and reminding the fact that that outlet is available for people, and thank you. Thank you, Paul and Lisa. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, great. Do we have anybody else?
That's it, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number 8, Consider Resolution 172025, Adding A Signer To The City Bank Accounts. And Counselor Corvus, we need to go ahead and mention it this time.
Perfect. With me working at First Community, I will recuse myself for item number 8 and 9.
Counselor Corvus has chosen to recuse herself from Agenda Item Number 8 and 9. Mr. Norberg, if you need an explanation, or I can ask for a vote at this point, it's pretty straightforward?
I think it's pretty straightforward, and if the Council would like a long-winded explanation, I could do that.
No, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion during discussion. Yeah, I'm turning down your long-winded explanation, Mr. Norberg. I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to adopt Resolution Number 172025, adding Mark Danning as-
Second.
Motion by Mayor Flaherty to add, to adopt Resolution 172025, seconded by Counselor Waddington. Any questions that anybody wants to ask or comment? No. All right, we'll go ahead and call the vote between three of us. All in favor? Aye. There we go. Passed unanimously. And now Agenda Item Number 9 is similar in respects to the Community Department's Resolution 182025, adding Jessica Barlow as a bookkeeper for the financial accounts at First Community Credit Union, Banner Bank, and Local Government Investment Pool, LGIP, which, Mr. Norberg, I think that just allows her to sign on-
And take care of business.
That relates to her job.
Allows her job.
Yep. So I'm also going to make a motion to adopt Resolution 182025, adding Jessica Barlow to our accounts.
Second.
Mayor Flaherty made a motion to adopt Resolution 182025, seconded by Counselor Waddington. Any questions? Discussion? Nope. Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Passed as unanimously. Thank you. All right. Agenda Item Number 10, Consideration Of Sponsorship For Kokil Marin Lakes. Lee Taft is here, so because it's on the agenda, he has to come up and, well, we'll give him four minutes instead of three, but no.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I want to just, I know that you have in front of you the sponsorship. We're in our third year. Nothing has changed. It's still the same level of sponsorship. I just would like to, I know earlier in the year, I presented to you, just as a follow-up, we did 78 games last year. We were able to increase the scholarships for all four sports an additional $100. So the first year was five, last year was six, and this year it will be $700 per student athlete per sport. Last year, we had Emmy Wirebaugh actually come on board to learn sports broadcasting. She is, I believe, at SWAT this year, and she has to-
At UVO.
UVO. She did get to UVO. Okay, awesome. But anyway, she's going to follow up with that, and so we also give her $500 scholarship last year, so it's wonderful. The radio station was down for quite a period of time because of the fire that was at the tower location, but Mr. Jones and Sean Wirebaugh, RIT for the district, has worked through the summer, were back on the air, have been, and doing very well. So I'm hoping that the councilman you served would go ahead and see the value of being able to sponsor once again, and to add to that, I'd love to give my email, phone number, whatever, to whoever it might be in case I miss something that's going on with the city, because we talk about it, obviously, throughout our ballgames, and we do home and away games, obviously, for all four sports, and then the messages, just in case some don't realize, it cannot be a call-to-action message because it's a high school radio station. So it's nothing about any of that, it's just what is done in the community via the city businesses, whatnot. So I have a lot of fun doing that. So I'm just here to see if y'all would like to go ahead and continue on with that.
Remind me, Mr. Norberg, early, I think we did up to 1,200 last year, and that gave us a good-
Yeah, because it's 750 for the, and by the way, you might say, "Well, what about September?", we've been talking about, she is a pre- and post-game sponsor, anyway. But, so yes, it's 750 total for the five-month season, no billing in November because there's no sports, and then each, anything that has to do with playoff for state or in the bracket, it's an additional $50 because there's a lot more that's going on, that's all.
And I'll just throw it out here so the Counselors know, I asked the question, we've been so tight this year budget-wise, so tight that many of our employees didn't get a cost of living increase, so I became instantly sensitive about this, but I asked the question, Mr. Norberg, we actually have, similar to the URA, we have a pot of money that goes directly to promotions, basically. It's part of our transient lodging tax, gave some of the income of that, and so we do have an amount of money that this would pull from, and it's a legitimate use, and the money's there for us to do it, and so I just want to offer that. And I'm totally fine if it requires a motion to make a motion to approve up to $1,200 to sponsor a Kokil High School program and scholarships.
May I second?
All right, motion by Mayor Flaherty for up to $1,200 scholarships, seconded by Counselor Corvus. Any other questions? I jumped right in and got the thing going. Sorry. Any other questions or discussion or? Right. All those in favor? Aye. Passed as unanimously. There you go.
Can I have a signature and take that paper with me tonight so I can turn it in tomorrow?
Yep.
Perfect.
Lee, thank you for your-
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Definitely appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll reach out.
Insering, if there's someone that wants to contact me, please, please, please. I would appreciate that.
Good, buddy. Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Lee. Good to see you, man.
All right, we're now at Agenda Item Number 11. We're going to go to a public hearing. Haley, should we go ahead and go to public hearing and then talk about this, or? What's a quick, I always forget about these public hearings. I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and adjourn our general session at this point at 7:24, and I'm now going to open our public hearing to solicit feedback on recently completed CDBG-funded projects to design and permit planned water system improvements. So that hearing is now open. We can hear a little bit of an explanation from Haley, and the idea of the public hearing is if anybody came specifically to give comment on this part of the process, this is when they would do it. Good, Haley, anything you want to explain?
This public hearing is open for our Community Development Block Grant, which we received. It's a federally funded grant to design these three improvements to our water system that we talk about a lot, so it's the replacement of a water line that runs from our river intake pump to the water treatment plant, some improvements, important improvements to the water treatment plant, and an improvement to the warning tank, and this project, we had a public hearing in the beginning of the project to solicit people's feedback on whether or not this was the project we should do with these funds, and now this public hearing is to get input from citizens on how we performed, whether it's the administration of the grant, the design itself, or the permitting. We have received, we've completed our environmental review, we've received all the required permits, and we've now just applied for funding to construct the project. So if there are any citizens here tonight that want to comment on the project, this would be the time. Also, we will be turning over, because of our timing, we'll turn over the minutes, or the audio from this hearing to our funding agency instead of the minutes, so they'll want to hear you ask Mayor for public comments and then-
Great, so thank, well, now I'm on the hook. Pay attention to what I'm saying here, but, well, thank you, Haley Sheldon, for explaining that, and so now at this point, we will open it up for public comment, and so if anybody's here wishing to give public comment during this hearing, now is the time. Seeing none, at this time, I can close the hearing, so I'm going to close the hearing at 7:26 and reopen our general session at 7:26 as well. All right, there we go. That was the main function of that agenda, is to make sure we hold that hearing as part of the process, so thank, thank you, Haley, and the whole team. I mean, I know Mark participated a ton on this project, and for Mr. Norberg, and so the whole team, I mean, thank you. This is years in the making, so, great, thank you. All right, we're going to go on to Agenda Item Number 12. That is also Haley Sheldon, so this Agenda Item Number 12 is ordinance 1536, declaring the annexation of 1.2 acres near 498 West Central Boulevard into the city of Kokil, and applying city zoning designation residential to that annexed property. And so-
So I did write the, you have a, we had to update the ordinance in the council letter.
Yeah, we did.
Okay. And I've explained in the council letter, do you all want me to do a little explanation of this, or?
Yes, please.
Okay. So this is the property that is right next to Chevron, that has those storage units in the front, and then in the back, there are about six or seven homes. This is one large piece of property. It's currently bisected by our city limit line. In the city, we have this big urban growth boundary, which is as far as we can go, all the property that we want to incorporate, and inside of that, a smaller city limit. So we expand our city limits into the urban growth boundary over time, as we like to, you can move to annex property in that's in the urban growth boundary but outside city limits, and owners of that property can apply to annex their property into the city. When they, in this particular situation, this property's half in, half out, which has created an issue for the property owner. They want to divide the property, actually, and so they would like to incorporate the entire property into the city, which is part of our plan, because they're inside the bigger hole, right? They're inside the urban growth boundary. When we, and this, I'm almost done, when we bring properties into the city, we have to assign them city zoning. They can't just have county zoning and be inside the city, and so when we do that, we look to our comprehensive plan, which has assigned designations to all of the land in the big urban growth boundary, to what we would assign the zoning. In this particular case, the area to the north, this property that we're trying to annex in- annex in, it is designated as residential. The area on the southern edge of the property that's already in city limits is designated as C3 commercial. So, when we bring this property in, we are going to create a split-zoned property. But we have to do that, because we have to assign the zoning to the property we're annexing in that's consistent with the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan has that area as residential, which makes sense, because you've got that commercial area along Central, and then a little bit to the north, you've got those residentially zoned properties. So, if the property owner in the future wants to adjust property lines, partition, rezone portions of the property, they can do that at a future time. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Any questions?
What's the benefit to the property owner? I guess, why would they choose to?
This particular property owner is choosing to annex into the city so that they can then partition the larger property. They can divide the property.
Okay.
There are many benefits to annexing into the city, though, for all property owners. The biggest one is that you can be served with city sewer. If you are not inside of our corporate limits, inside our city limits, which you are aware of, you can't connect to our city sewer system. You have to be on a septic system. So, a lot of people who are on the periphery when their septic systems fail, they want to come in. There's also other benefits, and they're all related to city services.
The obvious one for the city is tax dollars, obviously, which helps pay for those services and infrastructure.
Yes. We would tend to see only benefit to annexing properties that are inside of our urban growth boundary as the municipality, because we get tax revenue from that. If we can provide them with services, we would want them inside city limits. We've already sort of said, this whole urban growth boundary someday will be ours, you know? So, we're edging towards that. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Great. I'll slow down and see what else.
Yeah. I move to approve Ordinance 1536, declaring the annexation of certain real property into the city of Kokil, and applying city zoning designation residential to that property.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Flynn to adopt Ordinance 1536, as he stated, seconded by Councilor Waddington. Any other discussion or questions? Just a comment, thank you to your city planners, planning commission, and you for all the work, and thank you. Yeah. All right, all those in favor? Aye. All right, there you go. Passed as unanimously, Liz, on that one. Great, thank you, councilors. We are all ready to give the order, just like that. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, anything for to give the order, Mr. Norberg or Council?
So, I did want to ask about, is there an update on the Jefferson School Lot development? On, like, when should they be breaking ground and timeline on that?
Well, that's a timely question, Councilor. We are closing on the property this week. I was talking to the developer, and depending on the rain, which everyone depends on the rain, they'll probably start construction in the spring at this point. But they seem to be on task, so that's good.
And then, just as a reminder to how we have an open seat, what's, when is that application closing?
Yes, that application closes near the end of October, I believe, 24th. And so, that deadline is 24th, if anybody's interested in the open seat on council. And then, the plan is, with those applications, at least the working plan right now is at our November meeting, those applicants, wherever they are, would interview in front of this council. And very well, we could arrive at a decision that night, approve somebody, and that person would be voted on by us and literally take the seat for the rest of the meeting.
Wonderful.
And I just want to throw out, usually I do this when we do council comments, and I apologize. Councilor Cooper is out of town, and Councilor Westrom is not well this evening, so just recuperating. So, I usually mention that, and I apologize. Any else give the order? All right.
I'm going to go ahead and adjourn our meeting at 7:35, and turn to Madam President, URA, Corbus.
All right. So, I will open the meeting at 7:36. First up, the consent calendar.
I'm making motion to approve the consent calendar on September 2nd, 2025. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Second that one.
Okay, perfect. So, we have a motion that has been thrown out and seconded. Any other discussion, comments? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Okay. Next up, item number three, good to the order. Anything to discuss?
I'll just mention it, since we talked about the striping on Central, that was a URA project. So, if the question is, how is that being funded or paid for? That is out of our Urban Renewal Agency funds, so a pot of funds dedicated for those kinds of improvements. And so, just a reminder. And so, I guess I'll throw out on give the order, too, if any building owners that are in the urban renewal area, there's grant money through the city. If you want to make facade improvements to your building paint, several buildings have been doing that, and shout out to Wes Schwab. I mean, they've been working hard on their building and several other buildings around our cities, so I appreciate it, and thank you for doing that.
Very nice. Any other comments? Okay. We will adjourn the meeting at 7:38.
And there you go. That's our general session. Thank you, everybody, for joining us, and have a safe October.